All right, good evening. I'm going to call our regular Board of Education meeting for September to order. And I'm going to start with the resuscitation of our vision and mission. Our vision is that MMSD will be a learning community where all students are valued, challenged, supported, and inspired to reach for their dreams. And our mission, MMSD creates safe and inclusive schools, delivers high-quality instruction, strengthens positive relationships, and partners with families and the community to achieve student self-determination and educational excellence. Tonight, we'll start with a remembrance of Ann Brooks. We'd like to ask for a moment of silence this evening for our district to recognize the passing of Ann Brooks, who was a Behavior Education Assistant at Senate Middle School. Ms. Ann is remembered as someone who was not just a staff member at Senate and MSCR. For over seventeen years, she was the heart and soul of our school and after-school community. Her presence was a constant source of comfort and joy, and countless students began their mornings feeling seen, valued, and welcomed because of Ann's unwavering dedication. As our Behavior Education Assistant, MSCR staff, dance coach, and so much more, Ann possessed a rare gift for connecting with students during their most challenging moments. Her patience was limitless, her compassion boundless, and her belief in every student unwavering. She will be missed by many, and our support and condolences are extended to her family at this difficult time. Ann's passing has taken a significant toll on so many staff and students in the Senate Star family and community, and we remember her tonight. Please join me in participating in a moment of silence in honor of Ann Brooks. Thank you. We'll now move into the public input part of our agenda. And I'm going to start with the written statements for this meeting. There were twenty-nine written statements submitted for this meeting, two in support of potential phone-free school day policy, and twenty-seven in support of addressing salary compression for veteran classroom teachers. We also have registered speakers who are ready to share tonight, either in person or online, and I believe we have two online speakers who will start with. Jessie?
Thank you. Our first online speaker is Patrick Grant.
Members of the Board, Superintendent Goddard, I'm here to raise a serious concern about multiple policy violations. Sorry. Members of the Board, Superintendent Goddard, I'm here to raise serious concerns about multiple policy violations that I believe have been committed by the endorsement use of promotion of the SNAP mobile app for fundraising with MMSD Athletics. I am a proud MMSD parent of two students at East. I'm active in the school through the boosters and the teams my kids are involved in. I have volunteered at MMSD schools since they were in kindergarten. In short, I am an MMSD supporter, and I recognize the remarkable job you do when resources are continually under stress. After listening firsthand to the representative from SNAP Mobile at the back-to-school sports night, I was skeptical. Those fears were confirmed when my kids came home after being required to give twenty names, email addresses, and phone numbers of people who can be targeted for donation on school grounds for the team by a person with power, in this case, the SNAP Mobile rep. This directly violates Policy 4510, the anti-bullying policy. The SNAP Mobile platform publicizes who is given, who they are supporting, and how much. This lays bare those with means and connections, making it easy to deduce who hasn't given are those with limited means to financially give. Anonymous giving is allowed, but a review of one fundraising page revealed just two anonymous donors out of one hundred and seventy-nine, and the names of those they were supporting were not anonymous. This can lead to ample data that could be used by some to tease at an athlete's popularity or worth based on the number of social cheers on the app. Some say the donation is optional, but historical evidence of the social pressure to fit in is real, a fact that SNAP Mobile profits by taking twenty percent of all donations made in the campaign and asks donors to cover the credit card fee and even tip the platform. Per Policy 4510, I am reporting it to you, the Board, so you can initiate an investigation with those impacted, and I am asking that the investigator be independent from those who selected the SNAP Mobile app within the district. In addition to 4510, Policy 4121, which covers money solicitation and collection, specifically, reporting can only be done by grade, building, or school. The collection of money shall be in no way cause for embarrassment to students or parents, and there should be no reward scheme for raising money, all of which SNAP Mobile does. Moving past the policy issues that I have raised, Superintendent Goddard, at the unveiling of the new MMSD logo, you evoked imagery of MMSD supported by the pillars of community. You said that you want to make sure MMSD is a destination school district for kids to learn and for our community to believe in and support. This is about community. This is about speaking for folks who just gave because they felt they had to for the team, because it was endorsed by the district, because they believed it would impact their standing or their kids' standings within the team. Short term, you might raise money, but how long until parents say, "Don't play that sport or activity," because they don't want to get hit for the fundraising or for the twenty of their friends' names to publicly be named and shamed for how much they have not given because they are not on the SNAP Mobile cheer wall? Each school in the district has a booster program. The local community you talked about, Superintendent Goddard, is there where folks whose kids are in the schools are working to raise funds, where I am tonight. It's not outsourced in Seattle, Washington. Make it easier for coaches and parents to work together, not drive a wedge between those with means and those without. The research is clear. Involvement in extracurricular activities is powerful. In the education of our youth, local community involvement in our public schools makes them stronger. SNAP Mobile has admitted a mistake. Don't repeat the mistake by continuing SNAP Mobile use for winter and spring sports or other fundraising efforts. Be the pillars of the community's strongers. Don't cut them down or erode the very foundation of the community you want to thrive. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next online speaker is Dee Wetzel.
Hello, are you able to hear me? Okay, thank you. I'm not able to get my camera working. I apologize for that. Am I allowed to still read my statement without the camera?
Of course.
Yes. So I'm a retired SLP who gave this district twenty-nine years of service. I sent all of you an email today detailing my opposition to the board voting to give themselves access to district health insurance. Maybe you didn't have a chance to read it yet. I know the people are busy. I'm here tonight to give you the highlights. I am one hundred percent opposed to this because, one, it is a conflict of interest. If all or most of the board receives district health insurance, who votes in favor in the future when health insurance questions arise? Who would make decisions regarding health insurance plans that involves healthcare options for thousands of district employees? At this time, I don't feel you have adequately answered these questions. Number two, equity. How is it equitable that the board gets to vote for giving themselves health insurance while approximately thirteen-hundred employees are not eligible due to various reasons? Do board members and district management really believe that there are not part-time staff who would also appreciate health insurance? MMSD only offers so many hours for certain job positions, and those hours magically fall below the threshold that one needs to be eligible for insurance. In the spirit of equity, perhaps the board could work on a plan that gives all MMSD staff health insurance. Maybe this plan would also help with the district's ongoing problem with staff recruitment and retention. Yes, giving all staff would be an expense, but that is another conversation. In terms of expenses, how much would yearly health insurance for all board members and their families cost? What budget items will be cut each year so that the board can have yearly health insurance? I recognize being on the board is work, and much of it is tedious and thankless. I'm sure there are times that you feel you have put in a lot of time that felt uncompensated. Well, welcome to our world. This district would cease to function without all the unpaid time from MMSD staff, including part-time staff. I recognize health insurance is a serious issue for our community, our state, and our nation, but that is a separate issue. I personally believe that some type of single-payer healthcare is needed. To close, I would remind, board members are not employees. Board members are elected to serve the community and the school district. School board positions are not professional jobs that are meant for people to stay in long term. It is a public service-type position that offers a stipend. Should board members have health insurance? Yes, everyone should have health insurance. Should board members receive health insurance through their work as an MMSD board member? Absolutely not, one hundred percent no. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you to our online speakers. I'm going to now move to our in-person registered speakers, starting first with, I think it's Shandra or Chandra, I apologize if I mispronounce, Stegner, and then following will be Kristen Conrad. Hi, is it Chandra or?
Chandra.
Chan?
Chandra, yeah.
Chandra, all right, welcome. Just as a reminder for yourself and anybody else who's coming up, you have the three o'clock up here, and then also a black box on the podium. When you see a yellow light, it means you're about thirty seconds, and then the red light means you're at time. If you're still finishing your thought, I'll give you a few additional seconds, of course, so we can hear you close your.
I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Shandra Kelcher, and I am a product of, a parent of, and a teacher of MMSD. My story is different from my colleagues who are also speaking tonight. Mine is different because not only have I been affected by wage compression since starting in MMSD, I lost nine years of experience when I signed my contract in 2011. I started my teaching career in ninety-seven in another school district, and I have taught every year since. When I was hired in MMSD in 2011, I had fourteen years of experience, but the district only acknowledged five of those fourteen years on the pay scale. This is now my twenty-ninth year of teaching, and I am on Level O. O is the fifteenth letter of the alphabet. Year twenty-nine, Level O. This is fourteen levels below where I would be if I were hired in MMSD today. I was first made aware of pay scale discrepancies in 2017. That year, I had a new teaching partner who brought sixteen years of experience with her to the district. When she signed her contract, she was rightfully placed on the level of the pay scale, acknowledging all sixteen years of her experience. Twenty-seventeen was my twentieth year of teaching, yet I was being paid for eleven years. I had four more years of teaching experience than my partner, but was being paid for five years less. As I dug deeper, I learned that new hires were being placed on the salary schedule in correspondence with their experience, as it should be. In 2019, I first contacted the Board of Education and the school district about the nine years that I lost when I came to the district. I stopped pressing the matter due to COVID. I recently learned of two MMSD employees who left the district for personal reasons and have since returned. Upon returning, they were both rightfully placed on the salary step that directly corresponds with their teaching experience, earning them back years lost from wage compression. One teacher left on Q, returned just after three years, and was placed on BB. Consider this, this is my twenty-ninth year of teaching, and I'm on Level O because I started in 2011. Had I started my career in ninety-seven with MMSD, I would now be on Level V. Yet, a teacher new to MMSD this year, also in her twenty-ninth year of teaching, was rightfully placed on Level CC. There is a thirteen-thousand-dollar difference between Level O and CC. It is inequitable that three teachers with the same amount of experience are so far apart on the pay scale. I am asking you, the Board of Education, work with the district to rectify these discrepancies. I am not just asking for myself. I believe all classroom teachers should be on the letter of the pay scale that directly corresponds to their total years of teaching experience. Thank you.
Welcome, Kristen. After Kristen will be Heather Kelcher, I think it is. Okay.
Good evening, President Nichols, members of the Board, Dr. Goddard. My name is Kristen Conrad, and I'm a fifth-grade teacher at Glenn Stevens Elementary. I'm here to highlight a significant issue in our district: compression salary. This is a problem that undervalues our veteran educators, weakens our staff morale, and puts our students' long-term success at risk. Although I'm happy to see competitive salaries for new teachers, by not moving veteran staff to match their years of service, you inadvertently devalue our knowledge, skills, and the institutional history that our long-serving educators bring to the schools every day. It sends a message that experience and dedication are not valued. I grew up here in Madison, and I'm a proud product of MMSD schools. I was thrilled when I got a job in Madison years ago because I wanted to give back to the community and school district that gave me so much. I chose to stay in MMSD over the years because I believe in this community and the commitment in education. I believe in MMSD so much that my own children are either currently attending or have graduated from MMSD. I spend an enormous amount of time and energy on my students and the school that I teach at. In my time here, I've seen countless former students graduate. I've helped develop new curriculums over the years. I've been on numerous committees, and I've mentored new teachers and teammates. I have trained practicum and student teachers and gone out of my way to build relationships with students and their families and have extended beyond the walls of my classroom. My passion for teaching has also rubbed off on many of my former students who've gone on to become educators, some of whom teach here in MMSD. I was discouraged to find out that, starting my thirtieth year teaching, I find myself not making much more than a first-year teacher. That makes it difficult for me to plan my family's future, and it's disheartening to feel that my dedication is not financially recognized. If we don't fix this, I worry our district will lose our most experienced and dedicated staff, and our students will be the ones that suffer. If I was hired right now by MMSD using the current HR policy, all my years of experience teaching would put me at Level DD. That's almost ten thousand dollars higher than what I'm currently making on Level V. That doesn't even include all the money I've lost over the years with the compression beginning in 2001. Veteran teachers are your most valuable resource. I hope you value our loyalty and dedication for all the years of service we've given to the district. We shouldn't have to leave and return to get the pay we deserve. Please make it right with us and fix the salary compression. Thank you for listening.
All right, we'll have Heather come up, and then following will be Jamie Crone.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Heather Kelcher, and I'm a kindergarten teacher at Chavez Elementary. I'm here also to highlight the significant issue of salary compression. It's a problem that's undervaluing our veteran teachers and currently weakening our staff morale. We are happy to have competitive salaries for new teachers, but it's sending a message that experience and dedication are not valued. Around the community, I've always advocated for Madison schools, and I'm grateful for the opportunity to teach here. I grew up attending MMSD schools, and after college at UW-Madison, I started working in the district first as a substitute in nineteen ninety-four and then as a classroom teacher in nineteen ninety-six. My family lives here, and my two children are graduates of Madison Memorial. I welcomed my thirtieth class of kindergartners this fall, and I'm so proud to teach each and every one of my students, and it brings me great pride to watch them grow up in elementary school, and I love hearing how they're doing after leaving elementary school. In recent years, I've been very saddened to learn that MMSD has been taking off the first levels of the pay scale and hiring new educators with less experience than me at higher pay levels. For example, as you've heard, I have two friends new to the district this year, one with twenty-eight years of experience, placed on Level BB on the pay scale, and another friend hired with twenty-nine years, placed at CC. Imagine how this made me feel after dedicating my career to MMSD, thirty-plus years, to only be on Level X, the twenty-fourth letter of the alphabet. It's disappointing to feel that my dedication is not financially recognized, and I'm asking that myself and all of my colleagues be paid according to how many years we have been teaching, just like the new hires are being paid. I should be on Level DD, which is thirty years. Veteran teachers are our most valuable resource, and please make it right with us and fix the salary compression. Thank you.
After Jamie will be Stacy Smith Buckley.
Hi, my name is Jamie Crone. I am a first-grade teacher at Chavez Elementary. I was also a former coach at Memorial High School for sixteen years, and I'm a parent of two MMSD students, actually, one is graduated. I'm here also to talk about the salary compression. While we are happy to see competitive salaries for our new teachers, not moving veteran staff to match current salary levels devalues our knowledge, our skills, and institutional history that long-serving educators bring to our schools every day. It sends a message that our experience and dedication are not valued. I started working for this district in nineteen ninety-eight as a coach at Madison Memorial High School. While coaching, I completed my student teaching experiences in all MMSD schools. I left for a year and came back to Madison. I enjoyed all my experiences in the Madison schools and knew that I wanted to have a career here in this great community and this great school district. I'm currently in my twenty-sixth year of teaching. While working in the district, I have been a part of many district initiatives to help move our scholars and community forward. I have served on district math committees, leadership teams, created and implemented assessments and curriculum to support great learning. I have served as a staff and a parent representative on parent-teacher and student organizations. I have served as a mentor teacher for current staff in our school district, as well as a cooperating teacher for the University of Wisconsin for over eighteen years. When I realized what was happening with the salary compression, I was taken back. Why would a school district that I have dedicated my heart and soul as a parent and a teacher not have realized this error? After twenty-six years of teaching, I am still at Level T, and I should be on Level Z. That is a huge difference in pay. This makes it really hard to plan for my family's future, and it's disheartening to feel that my dedication is not financially recognized. This is not just about compensation for our staff, it's about investing in our students. You can't replace knowledge and experience that veteran teachers bring to our schools. Veteran teachers are an integral part of helping our students grow socially, emotionally, and academically. Veteran teachers are your most valuable resource. Please make it right with us and fix the salary compression. Prioritizing salary equity for our experienced staff is the best way to ensure the long-term health of our district and the continued success of our students. I ask that you take steps to address this issue urgently and thoughtfully. Thank you for your time.
Stacy coming up, and then it will be followed by Veronica Webb.
Good evening, President Nichols, Dr. Goddard, members of the Board. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Stacy Smith Buckley, and I'm a Reach teacher at Chavez Elementary and Randall Elementary, and I'm here to talk about the critical issue affecting our district: the lack of salary equity from our experienced staff, referred to as salary compression. This problem impacts staff morale, encourages turnover, and ultimately hurts our students. I'm happy to see competitive salaries for new teachers, but by not moving veteran staff to match, devalues our knowledge, skills, and institutional history that long-serving educators bring to our schools every day. It sends a message that experience and dedication are not valued, not to mention putting us at a disadvantage for retirement in our current economy. For me, this isn't about budgets, it's about people. I want to share my own experience with you. I am a product of MMSD, and I have been a teacher in this district for twenty-seven years. For my first thirteen-and-a-half years in Madison, I was at elementary and middle school. I taught special education, I taught Reach, I taught instructional technology. And after that thirteen-and-a-half years, I had the opportunity to come and work downtown in instructional technology. I was an instructional resource teacher, a teacher leader, and then a tech coach. And later on, while being a tech coach, I was disheartened to learn one of my colleagues in the tech coach role, who was hired after I was, so he had less experience than me in teaching and no experience in doing that coaching role, was hired at a higher salary than I was. Because, as I found out with salary compression, that steps were removed from the salary schedule. Regularly participating in equity meetings at that time in central office staff for full days and not feeling like the district was really treating me with that same level of equity as my newly hired peer did not sit right with me. But I remain in the district because ultimately I love teaching. I'm passionate about working with kids, instructional technology, coaching staff, and right now, teaching Reach, teaching STEAM concepts to kids is important to me. If I was hired right now by MMSD, oh, sorry. Thank you for your time.
All right, we have Veronica coming up, and then following will be Jana Casey.
Good evening, members of the school board. My name is Veronica Webb, and I teach at Chavez. I'm here to speak about the impact of salary compression for myself, our district, and the future of teaching as a profession. Following the call to teach is my life's mission. This is my thirty-first year of teaching. I have had over six hundred students pass through my classroom. Over thirty years of teaching students to read, to write, understand numbers, develop critical thinking skills, and learn how to get along with others, something very much needed in today's world. But along with that, it's the development of relationships with students and families. This is done over a very long period of time, years of simply showing up and caring. You know you've done something right when your students come back to visit, invite you to their graduation parties, receive emails from parents saying that you made a difference in their child's life. After fifteen years of teaching at MMSD, I left. I left because my father was dying of cancer. The doctors gave him six months to live, and it turned out to be three. We moved our family to New Zealand, very far away from the sadness giving me time to grieve. When it was finally time to return to the U.S., we could have picked anywhere. We came back to Madison. I love this district, and I love my job. Teaching isn't a stepping stone to another career, not a launching pad to administration or the IT world. Some student teachers see this job as a way to get somewhere else. Not many of us stay long. I'm invested in this profession, and I'd like to think that this district is invested in me. A commitment to people who take care of our future, building relationships, harnessing loyalty and trust to do the right thing. Salary compression undermines morale. New teachers should not be getting paid more than experienced ones who have put in their time. The skill of teaching is developed. It's not handed over the minute you get your degree. Salary compression sends a message that dedication, loyalty, and experience isn't valued. Putting kids first has always been our driving force. Today, we're putting teachers first. Newer teachers see it. It determines whether or not they stay. How many teachers will actually retire at sixty rather than quit and find something with a higher wage? It's time to show your commitment to quality education and to the people who have stayed committed to this district. Establish practices that show equity. Thank you for your time. Thank you for your time.
All right, I believe we have Jana. Jana, okay, and then following will be Marie Stargel, maybe? Stargel, all right, thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Jana Casey and I'm a special education program support teacher at Chavez Elementary, home of the Cheetas. I have been employed with MMSD for 34 years, since 1991. I'm here also to speak about salary compression. I just want to start by saying that this is my first time speaking at a MMSD board meeting. I've had, I've shown my support over the years in other ways, but when it came to speaking at a board meeting, I relied on others who would speak up. But now my time has come. It's time for me to speak up with this issue of salary compression. I cannot be quiet, I have to speak up. As a dedicated and loyal veteran teacher, I have to speak up. As someone who has been significantly impacted by salary compression, I have to speak up. Salary compression is a problem that undervalues our veteran educators, weakens our staff morale, and most importantly, puts our students' long-term success at risk. The issue of salary compression is about the teachers who have shown their commitment and dedication to MMSD. I would like to briefly share my family's lifelong commitment and dedication to MMSD with you. My history with the district goes very deep. I have been part of MMSD my whole life. I attended elementary through high school in the district and graduated from Memorial High School. I attended UW Madison and volunteered and did my student teaching also in MMSD. My entire family, husband and children, also attended and graduated from MMSD. Both my parents were long-term teachers, longtime teachers, and coached, and I knew from my earliest memories that I wanted to be just like mom and dad. I also wanted to live up to the words from Mrs. Grooms. Mrs. Grooms was my kindergarten teacher at John Muir Elementary School. And if you've been around MMSD long enough, you know about these Happygrams that I have saved over the years. She had a big impact on my life. And one day, I proudly received a Happygram that said, "Jana was so kind and helpful, a big helper today. The rest is history." From that time on, I have made my career of helping others, advocating for people with disabilities, teaching countless scholars and mentoring special education teachers for 34 years. I love my job and I'm so very thankful. Let me highlight the inequity with salary compression for me personally. If I were to be hired right now using HR policy, I would be at level HH. I am not. I'm currently at AA. I am seven levels from where I would should be, which is approximately $6,500 less per year. I'm here tonight asking that my levels, as well as my colleagues, be fixed to where they should be. This has major implications for my retirement and my family's future. It's disheartening to feel that my dedication is not financially recognized. Please make this a priority and fix the salary compression. Thank you.
All right, following Marie.
Hi, I'm Marie Stargel. I am, this is my 28th year of teaching. I've been at Memorial High School for that whole time. I have three beautiful children, two have, who have graduated from Memorial and some of their fabulous teachers have already spoken from Glenn Stevens. In addition, many of their other teachers are in the room. I have done it all. I run an organization, Peer Partners, for 10 years and we were friggin' rock stars. We had an amazing job. I have helped new teachers. I'm the one who's like, they're not sure what to do. I'm like, hey, make sure you do this and do that. They come and they ask me for help. I'm asking for your help. 28 years, seven levels. Let's be real, y'all. I was hoping for an overload this year, not because I want more stress in my life, but I wanted to be able to pay my bills better. I have four jobs. I work, I have 28 years of experience. I have two jobs in the summer, one that goes all year long, and another job that I just came that's going to help me be a little more sustainable. But I shouldn't be hoping for an overload. I want to just be able to teach my kids. Let me tell you, it's a relief not to have the overload and a little bit of a, that I just get to teach my kids and not have an overload this year. But I don't want those extra jobs. I just want to be paid what I'm worth. So seven levels down, it's fair. I've been here to speak to you about things before. I've stood, like I said, I've stood up for other parents, I've stood up for kids, I'm there, right? I've taken the training, I've listened to you guys, I've ta, I, I, yeah, you know, like I'm there. So the precedent is there too, right? We know that Student Services has already received their double salary compression has been fixed. Please bring it to the table, do the study, do what's best for all of us, and let us have our fair share too. Some little lovely new human should be making enough money that they don't have to have that many jobs, right? And I'm going to be there to support them, but it's time for you to step in and support all of us. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Michael Harris and then followed by Allison Gregg.
Good afternoon, board. Dr. Gothard, my name is Michael Harris. I'm an educator at Vell Phillips Memorial High School. I'm here to talk about my disapproval for the salary compression practices that are occurring in place. I began teaching in the district in 1994. And during that 30-plus years, I have become an active citizen, a community leader. I've been a head coach for three different programs. I'm also very proud to say that I love my job as an educator. I recall very distinctly the first time that I started teaching. My mentorship with veteran staff that I had as my predecessors were the individuals who helped me understand the concepts of loyalty, dedication, and commitment. And I have been very, very committed to that engagement in the countless hours of volunteering and advocating for, in behalf of the MMSD School District, much as my predecessors have done before me. This continues to be grounded with my core values, and we all know that is placing our children's growth and learning first and foremost. The annual wage increases that we have currently for veteran staff would help ensure that the maintenance of, of our experiences with leadership will continue with the integrity that we are talking about that has made our district a valued community asset. As I get closer towards retirement, I would like to leave with a feeling of feeling valued, earning back those steps that were eliminated within the salary compression would help that, and by paying our staff what we are worth in experience. Thank you so much for your time.
Right. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. My name is Allison Gregg and I have a child enrolled at Chavez Elementary. So I'd like to thank you, take the opportunity to thank all the teachers. I know you're doing an amazing job there. Thank you for helping out my child and others. I'm also a representative of the Wisconsin chapter of Say Yes to Recess. So I'm switching up the topic a little bit to recess here. So Say Yes to Recess is a national nonprofit that is working to restore recess in our public schools. Now, we get asked a lot, what does it mean to restore recess? For the last two decades, recess has been cut down in order to make way for more instructional time and more standardized testing. Yet despite that, test scores have not significantly increased. What has increased is behavioral issues in the classroom. Teachers cannot teach when they are dealing with disruptions and restless children. What has increased is physical health issues. Children are less physically healthy now than they have been in previous decades. And we've seen a huge increase in mental health problems. It's said that depression rates in Gen Z are 150% more than previous generations. This is a crisis. For this reason, I am advocating for 60 minutes of recess in Wisconsin public elementary schools. Recess is obviously not the only solution to this problem, but studies show it can make a big difference. Physical health improves. Behavior problems decrease, which actually leads to better quality time in the classroom. Teachers notice that they're able to teach more even with less classroom time. Test scores go up. Studies have found that they go up 10% in math and 7% in reading. And more importantly, mental health anxiety decreases by a whopping 70%. Now, the lawmakers at the Capitol want to keep creating more laws that add tests and more instructional time to our school kids' day. And at Say Yes to Recess, we say no to that. We know that teachers, staff, and administrators are doing their best with the limited resources they have. And we've heard a lot about the different brain breaks and movement incorporated in the classroom and think that's amazing. But it's not the same as recess, as unstructured outdoor time, where kids can go in the fresh air and decide for themselves what they want to play. So for that reason, I am saying yes to recess and I invite you to join me and say yes too. We are asking the MMSD School Board to endorse our organization while we seek to introduce a 60-minute recess bill in legislation. Thank you.
Next, we have Gregorio Ariano, I believe, and then Elva Tyson.
Good evening. My name is Gregorio Ariano. I'm a third grade teacher at Glenn Stevens Elementary School and an educator of over 20 years. I am fortunate that the salary compression does not impact me because I was, I was hired in 2017, but I am here in support of all my fellow teacher colleagues that are impacted by this. In particular, the teachers that are near retirement, whom it will greatly affect throughout their retirement if their salary is not commensurate with the number of years of their teaching. I hope that the board member will work to find an equitable solution for all teachers. Your actions will show your continued support for all teachers so our students, families, and community can thrive. Thank you very much.
After Elva will be Peter Anderson.
Hello, thank you for allowing me this opportunity to speak. My name is Elva Tyson. I teach at Glenn Stevens Elementary School. I'm here to talk on multiple issues. First and foremost, salary compression and the impact it has. Now, I have been negatively impacted by the unintended consequences of salary compression. Based on my hire date, I should be at least four steps lower on the salary schedule. This translates to a deficit of approximately $4,300 annually. I do not begrudge new hirees from being offered competitive wages. However, when the initial steps were dropped from the salary schedule, the salaries of current educators should have been adjusted accordingly. Since the passage of Act 10, experienced educators have felt undervalued, unappreciated. This has been felt with increased workload and especially since we have to fight for absolutely almost every single cost of living adjustment, as if this were an unforeseen expense. This includes the very offensive cola will be tied to the passage of a referendum antics that are often presented to us. It is in the district's best interest to retain experienced staff and demonstrate good faith by adjusting the compressed salaries. As a colleague just noted, that many of us could leave, get all of our years of experience and signing bonuses for being in shortage areas, some special education, some bilingual, and other licenses. But we stay because we love this community. Please don't take advantage of that love. Second issue I would like to address is your proposal to offer our health insurance to yourselves as board members. As mentioned previously, employees have to have at least 50% time, a 50% position in order to qualify. I believe the discussion last year was raising that minimum requirement to 75%. I actually don't know the outcome of that, but I know that it was a discussion. So I think that you would also need to consider if you were to give yourselves this health insurance, that would be part of the compensation package. We are often told that we cannot receive our cost of living adjustment because we're looking at the entirety of our compensation package and healthcare is part of that. So I don't understand how you would justify that when the board itself says, excuse me, our handbook says that we need to work at least 19 hours a week in order to qualify for that health insurance coverage. Secondly, the salary increase that you're proposing for yourself, I would ask you to reflect on how you have handled our cost of living adjustment over the last years and act accordingly. Looking at what your salary is, an average of nine years at 1.5%, plus that 1.8% for one year, that would basically be about $9,870. At 2% for nine years and one year at the 8% cost of living adjustment, that would be $10,331. Please consider how you are using our financial resources. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Peter Anderson. Could I share with you a personal note to the letter I sent to you on Friday about opposing the stipend increase? Last summer, our wonderful granddaughter, who's Mexican, was subjected to vicious racist comments at a summer camp she went to, a Christian summer camp. I can't begin to tell you the rage I felt, righteous indignation, righteous anger. But the key thing I want to, reason I'm mentioning that is that righteous anger may be righteous, but it doesn't mean is constructive in terms of the remedies that flow through our emotions when we are angry. I want to say this because I want to underscore, I fear that when you read the letter, you're going to say, well, we've solved the problem. We got now doing the science of reading, all those objections that I raised in that letter are now met. This would be the furthest thing from the interests of the troubled kids who are in your charge. First, it attempts, it would attempt to glide over the decades that it took for the district to change, and even then, you only changed when the legislature mandated that. And the reason for that inexcusable neglect of those in your care was because you were blinded by social justice group think. Group think that is so devastatingly wrong, it consigned tens of generations of black students to crippled lives after they left your charge. Second, that group think focusing mercilessly and relentlessly on uncovering systemic racism while ignoring the need to teach the kids to read does not work. Year after year after year of ignoring the fact that you're failing to teach 95% of your black students. The failure of this self-destructive worldview is far deeper than just using the wrong teaching method. It extends to the tyranny of low expectations and you're being so wrapped up in grueling systemic racism that you stop caring about teaching your kids to read and resort to pathetic divergence instead, and your inability to understand that giving deprived kids the love that they need and deserve must be accompanied by consequences as well. While you have abysmally failed your most challenged children, you suffer the ultimate indignity of being surpassed by Mississippi. Mississippi, who has risen from the state that was next to last and now ninth highest.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. We have your letter.
What?
You sent a letter. Thank you.
Well, I just wish you had some capacity at this time for the same moral indignation I do for the results you're producing. Thank you for your time, madam.
Our next speaker will be Michael Anderson and then followed by Elizabeth Metzloff.
Good evening and thank you for your time. I'm here to talk against the proposal for the board to increase their compensation and to allow board members to be on the employee health insurance plan. As a former school board member, I was always told and always believed that our priority should be first and foremost to do whatever is best for the students. Our second highest priority, to do what's best for the staff of the district. It's my opinion that this proposal does neither of these. Right now, about a quarter of employees do not qualify for the same health insurance that the board is trying to enroll themselves in. Right now, other school districts are preparing for federal and state funding losses, while the voters in this district approve millions of dollars to help students and staff not to be able to give a raise to the board. And also, as a side note, when I was on the board, I made about $1,200 a year. Thank you.
Good evening, members of the board and Dr. Gothard. My name is Liz Metzloff, and I'm a proud third-grade teacher at Stevens and a parent of two graduates of MMSD. I'm also here to talk about salary compression and its effect on myself and to fight for the other educators in this room as well. I began substitute teaching in 1993 and signed my first contract in the year 2000. I'm currently at a level O or 15 years of experience, even though I've dedicated 25 years of my life to the district, to the children in this district. I've also mentored over 40 student teachers from several universities within Dane County. And my experience should be valued by the district. I shouldn't have to waste the time of HR personnel to rehire me in order to get the pay level I've achieved through the years I've spent in MMSD. I'm not asking for a huge amount of money. It's the principle of being paid for my value and years in service. Please consider the years myself and other colleagues have dedicated ourselves to this district and adjust our pay to reflect the dedication, experience, and talent that we bring to MMSD. Thank you for listening.
Our next speaker is Andrea Misarelli and then followed by Maria Brown.
Good evening, School Board, Dr. Gothard, and the Madison community. I'm here to speak about the single most valuable asset in our district, our loyal veteran staff. They are dedicated educators who have committed their careers to the students and families of Madison. Over the past decade, public education has faced a period of profound turbulence. Our schools have navigated a storm of instability, from national attacks on the profession to the fears of deportations and threats to our students' identities, from the challenges of a global pandemic to navigating a revolving door of leadership. Through all of this, our veteran staff were the ones who provided stability, consistency, and a familiar face to our students and families when everything else was changing and blowing up in our communities. And through it all, and in the last six years, the district has been led by five different superintendents. New staff often came and left in a revolving door, but these veteran staff, they stayed. Our veterans, veteran staff are the backbones of our school. They don't just fill a role, they possess an irreplaceable institutional knowledge that benefits every student and colleague. Over the years, they built profound community relationships and trust with our families. Our veterans' teacher skills are honed over the years of practice and learned how to adapt to different students. This is important because their advanced skills allow them to manage complex or challenging classroom dynamics effectively, ensuring a better learning environment for everyone. They are also the first line of training for new teachers. This mentorship is critical because the guidance of a veteran staff can significantly reduce the turnover rate of our new teachers, ensuring we retain the new talent we worked so hard to hire. While HR departments across the nation are offering large signing bonuses and deals to attract new talent, we have inadvertently forgotten about the loyal staff who have been here through it all. Our veteran educators feel underappreciated, and more importantly, their paychecks show it. This is the crisis of the salary compression. I ask members of the board and administration to immediately take action to fix the salary compression for our veteran staff. We must show our veteran staff that their years of service in the district matter. We must make a bold statement. Loyalty is honored and celebrated in Madison. This isn't just a retroactive fix, it's a proactive investment. By honoring those who stayed, we send a clear message to our younger staff that Madison cares and is committed and wants you to build your career and stay here, too. Specifically, I urge you to fix the salary compression for all staff hired prior to the 2018 school year to ensure their current salary steps match their experience level at which HR is currently hiring new candidates. Now is your time to invest in the educators who have already invested their lives in our children and community. Thank you.
Good evening, Dr. Gothard and School Board members. My name's Maria Brown. I'm a Spanish teacher at Hamilton Middle School and wish to speak to the issue of salary compression. As a veteran teacher, it is disheartening to hear that colleagues who have left the district and later returned have been valued for their years of experience by the correct placement on the salary schedule, while those of us who have chosen to dedicate our teaching career to MMSD are not valued and are paid less than our years of experience. In my 31-plus years of teaching in Madison, I have mentored over dozens of practicum and student teachers and taught thousands of Spanish middle school students, some of which are seated here today. We know the solution to this has financial implications for the district, but it is the right thing to do. Veteran teachers like myself are the most impacted by the multiple times the district removes steps from the salary schedule without adjusting those of current staff. Please value your veteran teacher's knowledge, talents, and experience by fixing this issue. Thank you.
Our final two speakers, Lisa Dindorf and Ben Jaeger.
Good evening. Thanks for having me tonight. I didn't know I was going to be able to talk because they said if you got here after 5:00, you wouldn't talk, so, but I made it 5:30. So here I am, a little unprepared, but a teacher in the district nonetheless for the last 21 years, meaning salary comprehension impacts me, but it doesn't just impact me, it impacts my friends. My friends are single parents. My friends have been teachers and they're holding down multiple jobs and trying to raise children alone. I am lucky enough to be in a position where I get to help them by talking to them and being their friend. I still want more money. Money's nice. Budget shows priority, where you put your money and who you put it into. We have experience, we have heart, we have passion. Teacher turnover is real. Ripple effects are real. We work with children. If we're happy, children are happy. If we love what we do, they love what they do. Thousand employees in this district have been underpaid for decades, literally decades. 30 years. That woman has been working for 30 years, and we got to hear about her student teaching. Student teachers don't make money. They go to school, they go to work, they don't, it's the only career where you have an internship, an apprenticeship, where you don't make money. It's wild. This is a, this is a passion job, and this is a data meeting. So please look into salary, our salaries, do the same as what you did for Student Services. It would be greatly appreciated because when you know better, you do better. Maya Angelou, thank you.
Hey, good evening. Ben Jaeger, Memorial High School Music. I've dedicated my entire 26-year career to MMSD families, and I love teaching here. I want to keep teaching here. It's come to my attention that my salary has been compressed several levels, and I look forward to the board and the district resolving this issue. I think it's a great investment and will strengthen the commitment that I and other veteran teachers have in continuing to serve the MMSD families. Thanks for listening.
Thank you to all of our speakers tonight. We appreciate you taking the time to come out and to express your thoughts, opinions, and stories tonight. I'm going to move us into the next portion of our agenda, which is approval of the minutes. I move that the Board of Education approve the minutes from the regular meeting dated August 25, 2025.
Second.
Any corrections to the minutes? All right, seeing none, student representative Lee, your advisory.
Aye.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those minutes passed unanimously. Next, we'll have news from around the district. And Vice President Pearson and I will alternate these celebrations.
Okay, celebrating our community, MMSD proudly celebrates National Hispanic Heritage Month from September 15 to October 15. We recognize Hispanic Americans' important contribution and influence on our history, culture, and achievement.
Celebrating our students, Kayla Shelton, a senior at Val Phillips Memorial, placed first in Business Communication at the Future Business Leaders of America National Leadership Conference. This also marked the first time a memorial student has, has won first place at a national, local event. Yay!
Okay. The Madison Metropolitan School District, MMSE, holds this distinction of having more semifinalists for the 2026 National Merit Scholarship Program than any other Wisconsin district. We have 43 semifinalists this year. Last year, we had 23. It's a big accomplishment, y'all. West High School has 28 semifinalists, the highest in the state. East has four semifinalists. Val Phillips Memorial has 11 semifinalists. Nationally, there are approximately 16,000 finalists selected out of 1.3 million senior students nationwide. They have an opportunity to advance in the program for the chance to win scholarships.
And to wrap it up tonight, in tonight's consent agenda, the board would like to acknowledge and thank all the individuals and organizations who continue to donate to the district and especially UW Credit Union, who provided a donation of $17,069.27 for a sensory room at the Rowe Elementary School in memory of Terry Pats. So thank you to everyone who supports MMSD. With that, I will pass it over to our superintendent for his update.
Thank you, President Nichols. Jesse, are you ready to roll the slides? Okay. President Nichols, members of the board, staff, and community, thank you so much for this opportunity. We are excited, although it's been more than three weeks, we're excited to welcome back our 26,000 students, 6,000 staff, and educators for the start of the school year. Our team spread out across the district that first day to help students rejoin their schools and their communities. I joined our scholars at Nuestro Mundo, White Horse, Albion, and Senate and enjoyed connecting with longtime MMSD families, many of whom I taught or served as their principal. Moments like these are good reminders of how connected we are because of the work we do. Although Madison continues to grow, it's clear that our schools are at the heart of our community. Speaking of community, I also want to acknowledge the many partnerships we have. Our partners are an important part of the work we do. One of our key partners is the Madison Public Schools Foundation. Just last week, I joined the Madison Public Schools Foundation as part of their annual Partners for Progress event. Not only were they recognizing current supporters, they were cultivating relationships to help build our support network, which ultimately benefits our students. Another one of our partners, Wisconsin Athletics, joined our students at Carl Sandburg Elementary School to read to our students and distribute free books. I joined them for the first part of the morning, and it was clear that these student athletes are role models for our students. The smiles on their students' faces spoke volumes about the athletes as the athletes engaged with them and read books to them. Our partnership with Wisconsin Athletics will continue throughout the year with athletes visiting other schools, including Hawthorne, John F. Kennedy, Lakeview, Aldo Leopold, Mendota, Orchard Ridge, and Lori Mancary. These partners, as well as many others, uplift and support our students and educators and help make these possible by providing resources such as books, school supplies, and winter coats, or through experiences like sharing the joy of reading. We appreciate all of our partners and are grateful to collaborate with them. Those partners, as well as our community, will also be important to Building for the Future, MMSD's boundary review. We are watching our city grow right before our eyes. Knowing that Madison is continuing to grow and will have an additional 100,000 people by 2050, we must be proactive in planning how this change is going to impact MMSD. This is where Building for the Future comes in. Our team will work closely with MGT, a nationally recognized firm, over the next two years as part of this work. We will assess current school attendance areas and MMSD district boundaries, establish attendance areas where development is occurring in areas near land owned by MMSD, and will evaluate current programs and choices to ensure MMSD schools remain responsive to aspirations and priorities. Our Madison community and our school communities are important to the outcomes of this work and are needed for this work to be successful. We'll continue to engage them in the process as well as keep them informed as to what is happening. And one way is through our website at mmst.org. To wrap up tonight's report, I want to share that we launched MMSD's first official brand identity. Thank you to all of you who were able to attend the event and celebrate this important moment with staff, educators, and community members. For those unable to join us, I'd like to share our brand launch video. Jesse, if you could roll that. We're here launching the new brand for the Madison Metropolitan School District. As you can see, the Capitol, you can see a book celebrating literacy, and you can see two strong pillars that are holding our city up, just like this community has for hundreds of years.
I like that it brings the whole city of Madison together with a really monumental place for the city, right, the Capitol.
I love the book because I'm a reader, and I think reading is critical to education and growth.
The M is Madison School District. It's the pillar that's holding up the Capitol, the city of Madison.
I think it's really important that the logo reflects our community and has the iconic Capitol dome and, and, you know, really bright colors that I hope represent the vibrancy and excitement that are in our schools.
That is our future, is our students, and they lift us all up.
I see revitalization and a change happening in our school system, and I think a new logo is going to help to promote that even better.
Making sure the Madison Metropolitan School District is a destination school district for kids to learn, for staff to work, and for our community to believe in and support.
We are Madison Metropolitan School District.
We are Madison Metropolitan School District.
I am Madison Metropolitan School District and proud to be.
Some incredible cameos in that video. Thank you to all that were part of that. As you know, it's the first time we took a purposeful approach and strategic lens to develop an image our students, staff, families, and community could connect to. And I found that those connections are being made. While I was at the Partners for Progress event, people shared that not only could they see positive change happening at MMSD, they could feel it. And you could see the connection in the launch video we just watched. This brand identity, this new brand identity belongs to all of us and boldly positions MMSD as the destination school district it is. President Nichols, members of the board, this concludes my report.
Thank you, Superintendent Gothard. Sounds like it was a good month, and it was a great brand reveal, and the shots are amazing with the Capitol behind you. All right. All right, we are going to move on to our next agenda item. We're going to report on the items that proceeded through the instruction work group held on September 8, 2025, and I will pass that over to Chair of the Instruction Work Group, Board Member Muldro.
Hebra President Nichols, September, we reviewed-
Chief Board President Nichols, September, we reviewed the 2024-2025 highlights of the year. We had a little bit of a data analysis. Then we looked forward to our upcoming school year, 2025-2026. October, we are doing a secondary review, or an update on secondary, specifically earning college credit and industry credentials, as well as work-based learning experiences, with a review of new aligned performance objectives. Our minor topic this October will be an update on school wellness and foreshadow a timeline to update the wellness policy.
Thank you. Next, we're gonna report on the items that proceeded through the Operations Work Group held on September 15th, 2025, and I'll pass that over to the Chair of the Operations Work Group, Board Member Castro.
Thank you. So, on September 15th, we heard from First Student and Overview of Transportation throughout the district. We heard from Building Services that provided a referenda update. We looked at our summer school counts and further prepared for the final budget vote in October. We reviewed budget amendments and then reviewed a cash flow borrowing proposal from the administration. And so, our next meeting is October 13th, 2025, where we will get the third Friday final September count for students, hear from the Facilities Team again, hear from HR, and then finally prepare for the final budget vote at the end of October.
Thank you. All right, we had no action items that proceeded through the Instruction Work Group and several that proceeded through the Operations Work Group from September 15th. So, we will take them one by one. The first one being, one of the action items is that we have a resolution authorizing temporary borrowing. So, I'm gonna read that motion. I move that the Board of Education approve the sale of the $55 million tax revenue anticipation notes at a total interest expense of $2,375,694.44, a true interest cost rate of 2.69%.
Second, Maya.
All right, are there any questions or discussion on this item? All right, seeing and hearing none. Student Representative Lee, your advisory vote?
Aye.
All right, all those in favor, aye? All right, that means none opposed, and that passes unanimously. All right, we'll move on to the next item. This is a budget amendment related to board member compensation. I'll read the motion. I move that the Board of Education amend the June preliminary 2025-26 budget in the following amount: Fund 10 for $60,100.
Second for the sake of discussion.
Okay, so, the full description, I'll just read the full description out loud and then open it up. So, the description for this motion is to increase the Board of Education's stipend to $15,000 per year and provide compensation of $100 for attending and participating in half-day retreats and $200 for attending and participating in full-day retreats. Following an affirmative vote of this motion, the Board shall amend Board Policy 1550, which is its policy on additional compensation for board members pursuant to Board Policy 1301, proposed policies. The Board of Education President will receive an additional $1,200 annually. The Board Vice President, Instruction Work Group, and Operations Work Group Chairs will receive an additional $600 annually. So, that is the full description of this amendment. All right, Board Member Vandermeulen.
Yes, I'm speaking in favor of this, and I'd like to give a little history of the entire situation. Board hasn't raised its pay since 2014. In fact, in 2014, the last time the Board pay was raised, Dean Loomis in 2014 raised the pay. It was seconded by James Howard. I was kind of surprised this morning to see in the paper on how the editorial board says we're not supposed to increase our pay, yet he did the same. It does baffle me. But I digress. The problem is as follows. We need to take all compensation seriously. I am strongly in favor of this, but that includes that we have to make sure our staff is taken care of. Therefore, I formally ask that we look into compensation, not a study, but actual compensation to determine where we can put individuals on the steps so that they are paid what they deserve as well. And for all those reasons I stated, I am voting yes.
Thank you. Board Member Muldo.
Thank you so much. I want to thank my fellow board members for supporting me in crafting this amendment to our budget. Our budget is a moral document. It does say, like, what we believe in, and I think investing in ourselves and each other is both about making sure that people are interested in this role and recognizing the work that goes into it, and also making sure that people are able to do this role. It is a tremendous investment of people's time, of people's families, and I think that our compensation, our stipend, needs to be reasonable, and that means it needs to increase with time like anything else. I really appreciate the recognition of the additional labor of our Board President, our Board Vice President, our Instruction Work Group Chair, and our Operations Work Group Chair. I also appreciate the update for our retreats, which hasn't happened since 1994. I do think that we've spent a really significant amount talking about this, and I think it's important to remind folks that the Board knows that they are not employees of the district, but it is not actually abnormal to compensate elected officials, right? Somebody like Ron Johnson is getting health care for his role as a senator. Somebody like Robin Voss is getting health care to gavel in and out of session. And so, I think when we think about the precedent that has been set by this Board, we have to take into consideration that the work of education is commonly associated with women. The work of this Board is done by a group that is majority women, majority people of color, and devaluing our labor has a historical connotation and reality to it that we have to confront in order to make sure that people of all types of backgrounds can sit at this table and do this work, can afford the childcare it takes to be available to this kind of role, can, you know, have some level of dignity and self-respect as they pursue this kind of leadership. And it is because of that I am proud to vote in favor of this amendment to our budget.
Anyone else? Yes, Board Member Soravo.
Chief Board Member Nichols. I am in favor of this move as well. I did some deep diving into the history of Madison and to when they've made adjustments in the past, and they've notably made adjustments when there have been additions to the workload. And over time, with No Child Left Behind, and then Act 10, and now we have the dismantling of the Department of Education, I can only imagine what we're gonna be handling on the local level is just simply going to be increased over time as we try to maintain the standards and everything that we have now and to continue to make sure that our students and our staff can thrive in all of our buildings. So, I'm in favor of this, and I understand all the work that goes into being a board member, not only at this table, but everything else that happens behind the scenes. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, Board Member Castro.
Evening. Thank you. I just want to speak in support of this as well. There's been some mischaracterization of my words taken out of context, I think. Well, I know for sure in general that it's supported by academic literature, that low pay is a barrier of entry for marginalized folks to reach local office. And so, for that reason, I am in support. In many ways, this Board is an anomaly in that regard in terms of our composition when you look at the scope of history, like the grand scope of history. But that's not guaranteed. Things are subject to change. And so, that's why, you know, I'd support this for, not this Board, but 30 years from now, what a school board could look like here. So, thank you.
So, yeah. I like to also do research and go on deep dives into things. And when you look at, just historically, to Sabian's points previously in some of the meetings, just historically looking at school boards just across the United States, looking at who has historically served on them, the reasons why school boards historically have existed. If you think about education and who education was meant for, you can kind of paint the picture of over time, this is how things have gone in this country. And so, just coming from that context and looking at, even in Madison, who historically has been able to participate. I am a single parent of three teenagers, right? And I'm not saying by no means that, you know, this work should be compensated more per se just because of that. There is a lot of work that goes into this. We put a lot of time into it, and if you consider, maybe there are folks who are in poverty or low-income folks that may want to possibly serve to support their community and the education of their children. Do they have the option to be able to do that? We think about folks who are part of underserved or underprivileged communities, even with Madison. And then you think about who is meant to be able to be a part of this. If you look just in general over the U.S., you see that school boards are also, there are many that are unpaid, yet the task is high. And I know that there's been this conversation around a job versus public service, and I don't think anyone on this Board currently, at least what I, you know, from folks I know, and have passed, in the past have come to this as looking for a job, right? And I think it's important to note that. If you look at conversations for the past at least 10 years around stipends or some kind of compensation for board members, and you look at even areas around us, Chicago, you look at Milwaukee, you look at other folks, I mean, the conversation is there. But I think what I also want to, like, make sure that we understand is that, even if we compare the work that we do, because we are elected officials and we are politicians technically, right? And we look at other politicians or elected officials in our city. City Madison Alder makes about almost $15,000, assuming 20 hours of work. And I know that they have tried to increase the Alder pay or compensation. They represent between 11,000 and 15,000 people. You go into the Dane County Supervisors, they make about 12,000, as it was stated, and they will have an increase again, but then you look at the district in which they also support. You know, I think when we are making sure that we are having folks that want to be able to do this work, and I know there's this idea that that just because we have uncontested races, that means that, you know, folks that by this we can increase that. And I do agree that it allows us to have and recruit folks that to want to do this work. And it doesn't necessarily mean that this is all that it is, but it is important to consider to set up folks, maybe my kids want to run for school board in the future, and it allows them to do that, or maybe some young folks, maybe Claire would like to while she's in college or somewhat. So, I do think looking at it as a way to increase participation and to have differentiating of folks to be able to serve, I think is extremely important as well. With that, I do support this. I think, you know, when this should be done is the question. And so, but I do support overall the increase of a stipend. And to make it clear, it is a stipend. We know we're not employees.
Thank you. Okay, can you repeat your question on the microphone?
A quick question. Is this retroactive? Is this immediate, or is this for the next term?
Board Member Vandermeulen, President Nichols, Board Member Vandermeulen. I'm recalling from our Operations Work Group that we put the entire annual investment in the amendment, but it would start the next cycle. So, it would start immediately after this vote, but it wouldn't go back to July, excuse me. So, it would be a little bit less this year than the total amount there, but moving forward, of course, it would be that much. That's what I recall from our Operations Work.
I thought so, but I wasn't positive, so I wanted to be sure. Got it. I really appreciate it. Thank you, because that was my only question.
Right.
And thank you for writing.
If there are no other comments, I would also like to add myself in. As, first, let me just say, I am in support of this amendment, and I appreciate all of the thoughtfulness that has gone in to write it and all of the folks who have been also emailing us and letting us know different points of view about this. Here are some reasons why I can wrap my head around being okay with this. One is, the Board is pretty much set up next month to approve over a $790 million budget that represents this district's investments in our staff, in our programs, and operating this budget. And with that comes a lot of responsibility. I also feel like, since I've been on the Board, right, I was sworn in in April of 2022, so I've completed one term, and I'm just starting the beginning of a second term. This Board has maintained a real commitment to provide total compensation for our employees to the greatest extent possible. I know that, you know, sometimes our employees have had to come forward and, you know, apply a little pressure for that, but generally, we have been committed to that. We've also have been through a lot of change in this district just in the three years I've been on this Board, a lot. And on a more personal level, Board members who are elected know that when we're elected, or I want to believe when I look at all of my colleagues, we're not running for the stipend. We're running because we care deeply about this district. And yet, we are also parents, homeowners, taxpayers, caregivers, like you name it, right? And so, we do the duty and we take the responsibility for what it is. And I also think, though, that as cost of living has increased over time, we also feel it, just like everybody else in our district, and we feel it just like everybody else in our city. We know that we're not employees, and, you know, we're not employees, and we play a critical role in hiring and retaining one of the biggest employees that we're responsible for, which is a superintendent. And if you've watched this Board over the last five years, there has been a lot of leadership change, and I think this Board has taken its responsibilities seriously. So, I believe it's the duties and the seriousness in which Board members bring to the role, as well as the cost of living and inflationary changes that we've seen over the years, combined with our dedication and commitment to make sure that our employees have had as much compensation as we could provide, you know, to the greatest extent possible, I think speaks for who we are. I would also say that to Board Member Vandermeulen's point, the board compensation hasn't been changed in like a decade. And so, even if you went back ten years and you did just the cost of living increase, just that, and you multiplied it year by year by year, I did the math just for the three or four years, the budget cycles I've been here, we'd be closer to ninety-five-hundred just for the last four years. That's not including the first half of the decade, right? So, you know, fifteen thousand may seem like a lot if you're not thinking about it's been a decade and there have been inflationary shifts accordingly. So, I say all that to say that I do support this and I also support it in recognition of hearing employees who are still coming forward asking for a salary compression to be rectified and knowing that we have important and serious work ahead of us to make sure that we can keep every employee face healthcare changes on the horizon and do right by our district and our community. So, those are my comments. All right. Given there are no further comments, I will ask for Representative, Student Representative Lee's advisory vote.
Aye.
Right. All those in favor, aye. All right, those opposed? Abstain? All right. You got that, Jesse? All right, thank you. All right, we have another item, which is budget amendment on board member healthcare. I'm going to read the motion. I move that the Board of Education amend the June preliminary twenty-two-five-twenty-six budget in the following amount from Fund Ten of one hundred and ninety-four thousand six hundred dollars. Second, for the state of conversation. Okay. And I'll do like I did with the last one. The description that is available for this amendment is that Board of Education members shall be eligible for Madison Metropolitan School District Healthcare parentheses, Health, Dental, and Vision with a required monthly contribution that is indexed to the percentage of premium paid by administrative employees of the district as defined in the handbook. All right, any discussion here? Or Member Muldrum?
Thank you. I am not going to be voting for this motion tonight. I believe in healthcare for all people. I believe that board members have to be well enough to go up and do this work. I also think that this has been a tremendously time-consuming conversation that has required a significant amount of research from our administration. And after all of that work we've done in collaboration, I think that we need to navigate what it would look like to have an option for the board that was truly separate and unique from the staff and administration themselves. I will be voting against this tonight, and my hope is that were we to bring this up again publicly, we would have a greater exploration of what an alternative option would look like that would put us in alignment with other elected officials who are insured through their position as elected officials. I also think it's really important to acknowledge that I'm really torn between kind of the logistics of making this happen and the moral conviction that is, we need to make sure that we're taking care of each other. I also want folks to know that it resonated with me deeply that there are over a thousand MMSD staff who do not have access to MMSD healthcare. And so, that is another reason why I am able to vote in favor of something that I brought forward to the board this evening. My hope is that we do not discuss this again in the near future and that we, you know, really value the conversation we were able to have about this, but do not bring it back to our conversation for the next couple of years. I think we've got a lot of things to focus on. We've spent a lot of time focusing on this. And I think it's time to move on and shift gears to our greater priorities as a body of governance and as a district.
Thank you. Any further comments on this amendment? Right, Board Member Muldrum, I want to thank you for bringing this amendment forward. I want to thank everyone on the board for their thoughtfulness on this amendment. I also had decided, as much as I liked the sentiment of the amendment, that I would not be able to support it for slightly different reasons. But I wanted to make sure that if board members were eligible, that we did not find ourselves in a compromised position around being able to make the kinds of decisions that we need to make for employees. And so, at this time, I wasn't planning to vote for it, but I appreciate that you also have put forward that you are planning to vote no, even though you brought it forward. Student Representative Lee?
Yeah, so thank you, Board Member Muldrum, for sharing those thoughts. Because when I was going over the agenda, I shared the sentiment that I would vote yes for my advisory vote. But after hearing your sentiments, I think I'll be voting no, just in agreement with what you said.
All right, seeing no hands on this one, then I will ask for a vote. Student Representative Lee, your advisory vote.
No.
Okay. All those in favor? All those opposed? All right, so that amendment fails unanimously. Next item is another board amendment. I'll read the motion. I move that the Board of Education amend the June preliminary twenty-two-five-twenty-six budget in the following amount from Fund Ten, twenty-four thousand five hundred dollars. Second. And like the other amendments, I'll read the description. That board members shall have access to three thousand five hundred dollars per year for professional learning as it specifically relates to serving as a board member. This stipend amount can be used to attend national or in-state conferences and workshops, including costs of registration, transportation, lodging, and food. As applicable, such expenses shall be compensated pursuant to the per diem rates that are current with MMSD guidance. Any unused stipends shall be forfeited if not used within that then-current year. All right, any questions or comments on this amendment? For Member Muldrum?
I am also planning to vote against this amendment this evening, in part because I have been on the board for about seven years. Over the course of that seven years, I've attended three conferences. One of those conferences was entirely online. And so, I deeply like respect the sentiment of this amendment and the investment in the learning of this body. However, I am not sure this is the right way to direct resources, I guess, in the long term, especially when I think there's not necessarily a demonstrated history of utilizing this resource. The other thing I find really challenging about this amendment is that I would really love for us to have this kind of approach to professional development for our staff. And I think to give it to ourselves without having that conversation in terms of the implications for the folks who work for us. And I'm sure there are so many people who would feel like they could benefit greatly from attending a conference, but also feel like they could benefit greatly from being able to, you know, have less student loan debt when they become an educator. And so, it is for those reasons, I'll be voting against this amendment tonight. I greatly appreciate the spirit of it, and I support my fellow board members in voting how they see fit.
Vice President Pearson?
Yeah, I want to say thank you, Nichelle, for, you know, kind of finding a way to add professional development in. I think for us to ask our staff in this district to do professional development, to find ways to embolden themselves further, I think it is important for board members to do something very similar. As a person who seeks out multiple opportunities statewide, but also national, to learn more, to deepen my understanding in certain areas, I've taken the opportunity to be a part of many organizations because we don't have a way necessarily to pay for any professional development per se for board members outside of maybe the WASB or something like that. And so, you know, working with other organizations to hopefully see if they would, you know, give a scholarship for folks that would like to do some things, and it has worked in many areas, some not so much. But I do think it is important to find some way for board members to do some of that professional development and be able to, you know, invest in us doing better to help us make better decisions just during our tenure here. I think to Ali's point, figuring out a way to do it. I'm not sure if the thirty-five-hundred is the best way. I think Board President Nichols for figuring out, you know, what it might look like if we were to do something like that. But I do think having access to resources to be able to do that, I think is important. So, I will not be, unfortunately, supporting it in the form it is now. But I do think, I do hope that we do have the conversation of what that might look like, especially as new board members are coming on and help continue their learning as well as board members who have been here for a while to continue learning. So, thank you.
For Member Saraval?
Thank you, Board Member Nichols. I actually also plan on not voting in favor of this particular. I, being new and trying to take in all the different experiences that come with being a board member and all the learning opportunities that are out there, I do not feel that I even have the fullest idea of what is all going to be available, because I find value in all the local opportunities that we have. But also, we definitely need to be connecting with those outside of Wisconsin, across the country. And I have no idea what kind of commitments those have and if some of those are going to be virtual or if there's going to be value to attend in person. And I know all board members have different availability when it comes down to those kinds of opportunities as well. And I do value the professional development of what it means to be a school board member and the things that we can do in order to bring more to the table and to make sure that we're sharing that with our fellow board members.
Thank you. For Member Moser Veltum?
I was voting in favor of this amendment. I think it's a great start. And it's a one-year budget amendment that I think may very well work. And I appreciate the, I appreciate as we continue to work together on our shared priorities, this opportunity, should it pass, to be able to make moves on that. So, I'll be voting in favor.
Thank you. I'll just add, I know that when I submitted this budget amendment, it was a little bit later than the other budget amendments, so there wasn't as much time, I think, for analysis to really look at the history of board members, you know, being able to attend development opportunities. And so, I'm sure there is some history of that. And but in absence of that, depending on how you all want to vote, just as the reminder here is that, you know, when I, part of the motivation for this was when I remember when I first came on the board, you start getting emails, not only emails from all about MMSD people, you also get emails from like the National School Board Associations and some of these other entities. And I remember being like, ooh, that looks like it would be a great conference, but I don't know. Is that something I can go to? Like, it just never felt clear on what, as a board member, you could do to learn more and to really be in a growth mindset about what it is, what there is to learn about being in a governance seat. So, the, really, the spirit around this amendment was just to try to make that a little bit more transparent and visible that if there are board members who have the time and the interest and the flexibility, that there are dollars that you don't have to feel like you're questioning whether you can attend something. And if there are other board members who feel like in their lives they can't attend something, it's not a judgment. It's more to say, okay, you didn't use the funds you didn't need in that year. So, I'm okay with whatever way this goes, as long as you knew the spirit of the amendment. All right, so with that, Student Representative Lee, your advisory vote.
No.
All right. That was deep, too. Okay. Those in favor, aye? All right, and those opposed? All right, that motion fails. It looks like five, yep, two.
Can I make another motion?
What was that?
Can I make another motion?
All right, we have a few more amendments. Thank you all. All right, next amendment. I move that the Board of Education amend the June preliminary twenty-two-five-twenty-six budget in the following amount, Fund Ten and Twenty-Seven for five hundred and ninety-five thousand six hundred dollars. This one is to expand 4K programs within our schools and to grow our 4K early care and education partners. By fostering a 4K community approach, we build a foundation where children, families, and educators thrive together, leading to a more successful and resilient school district. This will increase full-time equivalent positions seven point zero FTE. All right, Board Member Muldrum seconded. Any conversation or comments on this one? Yes, Board Member Muldrum?
I know we've talked about this a lot, and I think because tonight we're talking about what it means to be on the board, I'm thinking back to when I first came onto the board, and we didn't have full-day 4K. This is a recent phenomenon and something we have invested in significantly over the course of the last half a decade. I'm very grateful that we continue to do this work and expand this work. And I know how much it means to our young people and to their families. So, I am proudly voting in favor of this investment in 4K.
All right, any other comments? All right, Board Member Saraval?
This one kind of hits me personally, though, too, because the full-day 4K, I think, is an excellent opportunity for young learners to actually get an idea what a full day looks like when you have your half-days available. It's such a different experience. And as one who I took my child an extra year to give her that opportunity and the really good impact that that had upon her school experience, I am highly in favor of doing more programs like these and really appreciate that we are expanding this.
All right, Vice President Pearson?
Yeah, this is one of the things where I'm super excited about. I think it was something that I definitely, when running for school board, talked a lot about expanding 4K. And as a parent who had to experience the half-day 4K for my twins while being a state employee, it was very, very difficult to navigate that in terms of like transportation and all kinds of other situations. So, having our kiddos be able to have that extended day and then have it at more sites, it's just like really beautiful to see and making.
And making this investment in just our youngest learners in our district. But also, too, I just want to mention that the state legislature needs to ensure that they are fully funding 4K and that they need to make that increase. It's proven that it works for our kiddos. And as districts across the state expand, as we expand, the state legislature needs to take accountability in ensuring that they are adequately funding 4K in public education.
Thank you. Board Member Vandermeulen.
Yes, I'm happy to vote for this amendment. Very simply, as an autistic adult, the first thing, one of the things you learn is that a white child is diagnosed at approximately 18 months of age with autism. A black child or Hispanic child is closer to four or five years. The difference is 4K, the difference is preschool, the difference is early intervention. To not support this would be going against everything I believe in, so I strongly support it. But I also support what my colleague Maya Pearson says. There is no such thing as a quarter of a child, a half a child. These are our children, period, and they need to be funded as such. Therefore, I'm happy to support this.
All right. Oh, Board Member Castro.
Yeah, thank you. I just want to note that, you know, I was a Head Start baby. I'm living example of the effect of, the impact of early childhood education. And it's one of the more proud things that we've done, proud things that I'm proud of, that we've been able to do as a group and throughout the district, you know, the whole team. You know, this combined with the new reading strategies, which we adopted one full year before Act 20 was passed. I just want to note, really important. So, yeah, thank you to the administrative team and Dr. Gothard for submitting this amendment.
Yes, indeed. All right. Student Representative Lee, your advisory vote.
Aye.
All right, all those in favor, aye? All right, that passes unanimously. Next budget amendment on special education services. I move that the Board of Education amend the June preliminary 2025-26 budget in the following amount, Fund 27, $350,500. All right? And the description here is to meet the needs of students with individualized education programs as required by federal law. The amendment is to increase full-time equivalency positions by 4.687 FTE. All right, Board Member Vandermeulen.
I am enthusiastically supporting this. For years, we've worried on special ed because we had, could not retain staff because there wasn't guaranteed funding for these positions. This is something that is needed to be done. It encourages and shows that our district is valuing special education, and it is an absolute honor to vote for this.
All right, any other questions or comments? All right, Student Representative Lee, your advisory vote.
Aye.
All those in favor, aye? All right, great, passes unanimously. Final budget amendment. I move that the Board of Education amend the June preliminary 2025-26 budget in the following amount for Fund 41, the capital expansion fund of $2 million.
Second, Maya.
All right, and the description reads, $2 million increased investment in our facilities that will represent a 40% increase in the $5 million Fund 41 levy for capital expenditures related to buildings and sites. Upon expending part or all of the fund, a district's shared cost is increased on an amortized basis. Fund 41 allows us to minimize or control shared cost increases as the expenditures are amortized over a longer period.
Second, Nikki Vandermeulen.
It was already seconded. I was just reading the description. Any questions or comments? All right, hearing none, Student Representative Lee, your advisory vote.
Aye.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All right, that looks like it passes unanimously. Moving on to our consent agenda. I move that the Board of Education adopt and approve all of the motions set forth in Section 10 of the electronic agenda prepared for the September 29th, 2025 regular school board meeting, exactly as said motions are written. By voting affirmatively on this motion, a board member expresses his, her, or their affirmative vote on each of the motions consolidated hereby subject to any express separations that have been made by any member of the full board.
Second, Maya.
Are there any separations?
10.23.
10.23. Board Member Muldro.
Board President, I'd like to separate 10.8 and 10.14.
Okay. All right, 10.8, 10.14, and 10.23. Thank you. All right. Otherwise, I will move forward. Student Representative Lee, your advisory vote.
Aye.
All right, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All right, thank you. That passes unanimously. Moving on to separations. 10.8. Let me, this is a memorandum of agreement and contract for services with Urban League of Greater Madison Schools of Hope. All right, I'm going to read the motion. I move that the Board of Education approve the memorandum of agreement for October 1st, 2025 to June 30th, 2026, for a one-year renewal of the high-intensity partnership with Urban League of Greater Madison as set forth in the documents prepared for the September 29th, 2025 regular meeting. In addition, I move that the Board of Education approve an expenditure in the amount of $430,000 to be paid to the Urban League of Greater Madison for the Schools of Hope Middle School Tutoring Program using funds from the Strategic Partnership's operating budget. The initial contract shall run through June 30th, 2026. I need a second.
I'm sorry, you need the second, Ali Muldro.
Thank you. Discussion. Board Member Muldro?
Second. I was like, is the motion done? Thank you so much, Board President Nichols. I wanted to highlight this partnership because I am tremendously excited about it and what it has the potential to mean for our middle school students. I would like to ask Dr. McCray, Cindy, I'm so sorry to make you. Thank you, Cindy Green, for speaking to our investment in Schools of Hope and our partnership with the Urban League.
Board Member Muldro, could you please repeat your question? I apologize.
My question is, what is the intended outcome of this investment? So I am very excited about our investment in middle school tutoring, but can we speak to kind of the areas of tutoring or what some of that will look like and mean to our middle school students? And also speak to the partnership?
Yeah. Thank you for the question. So first, this is a longstanding, really proud partnership that we have with the Urban League of Greater Madison. I'll highlight one thing before I answer your questions. It's intentional for a one-year MOA because we are going to be working with members from the Urban League this year to re-envision what the future partnership may be. There were some changes that happened last year, and so it affords us an opportunity to think maybe differently or how we want to go about the future partnership. So we're really excited about that. The two main areas that our tutors focus on is literacy and math. So they work with our students mostly after school in the areas of literacy and math. We also measure dosage, so it's not just about literacy and math skills, but who's coming, how often are they coming, and what does that impact both having on their skill development, but also on their attendance during the school day?
Thank you so much. I am very excited to vote in favor of this partnership and the work of Schools of Hope. Thank you all so much for bringing this to our board and all the work that goes into supporting our middle school students in the area of literacy and math.
Thank you. We're excited, too.
All right, any further questions? All right, Student Representative Lee, your advisory vote.
Aye.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All right, passes unanimously. Moving on to the next separation, 10.14, Madison Metro Bus Passes. And the motion reads, "I move that the Board of Education approve the purchase of bus passes, bus passes, excuse me, from Madison Metro Transit System for $1,260,000 using funding from the fiscal year '26 Transportation Operating Budget."
Second, Ali Muldro.
All right, discussion. Board Member Muldro.
Thank you. I have often said that my bus pass was my, like, passport to independence. I think being able to access the city buses is so deeply meaningful to our students. I'm tremendously grateful for the investment our community has made in bus rapid transit and what that means for our young people who are engaged in a variety of programs and opportunities throughout our community. I am hoping we can, I could ask either Dr. McCray or our superintendent, Dr. Gothard, to speak a little bit more to this partnership and what it means to very young people have access to public transportation.
Board President Nichols, Board Member Muldro. I have Scott Chiak, our Senior Executive Director of Building Services, provide a little background on Metro. One thing I will point out, one of the reasons that I think this is an important highlight is, I believe, Scott, correct me if I'm wrong, 40,000 rides?
We had, over the summer, we had 80,000 rides just for the alone.
And I think it really highlights your point exactly how students are using this. Scott, if you could share a little bit more, please.
Yes, currently, we have 31 supplemental bus routes during the school season, moving all of our students throughout our district of a variety of different schools. We have 5,046 metro passes currently issued to students. We have, like I said, 2,400 students over the summer used 80,000 of those rides to give them the independence to move around the district, get other educational opportunities, and engage in our community. And we'll continue to keep doing that work year over year, especially as the director comes out with MMSD and preparation with Metro.
Scott, can you come closer to your mic, please?
I do that all the time, don't I? So I'll repeat a few statistics here. We have 31 supplemental routes, called Dodger routes, to move across our city for our school and our students. We had 2,400 students over the summer used bus passes with 80,000 rides over the summer, giving that independence and moving throughout the district for the community work that they do and interacting with our community. As Metro comes out with their new acting director and new director, we'll be working with them to continue that partnership for a few more years, keeping going forward. Our contract does expire this year, but we are planning, we're already working towards the future, keep expanding this program to give our students more opportunity.
Thank you so much for speaking to the importance of allowing our young people to access public. I am really thrilled to hear that we are hoping to prolong this partnership. This is a partnership that really emerged during the pandemic. And it also is a partnership that I think I value even more now that we've switched to yellow buses for our middle school students, because that first passport to my independence that was my bus pass is something that was given to me in sixth grade when, you know, our middle school students rode the city bus. And so, bridging that gap so that our young people are still getting that early access to public transportation, I think really builds, you know, the life skill of knowing how to navigate your community. I also want to say, I deeply appreciate this work as a parent. I am a mother of three, which really just means like I'm an Uber driver, y'all, like an unaid Uber driver. And so, this, it's really nice to be able to tell, you know, my oldest child to get to work on her own every once in a while. Thank you for this work and this partnership. It's really great to see our public transportation, our city, our community come together to support our young people in making this place their home and their own.
Okay. President Pearson.
I just have one question. As we are thinking about renewing the contracts since you mentioned that, do we know that each ride is a paid ride or is there a cap? So for instance, like if a student uses their bus pass for one ride and they use it again, it's capped at that price? So if it's like a ride is like $2, it's capped at $2 for the day? And essentially, no matter how many times they use that pass, it's only $2 for that one ride? Do we know that? Any chance, or does that make sense?
Yeah, it makes sense. I don't know if I have that data. I've had it.
Okay.
I got with you.
Okay. Yeah, we can figure that out because like there might be some savings, too. I know like for seniors, it's like capped at like six bucks or something. So if they use it, right? And so if they use it multiple times, it goes up to a certain dollar amount, and then it's, it doesn't charge, is what I'm saying. So, but also I want to be, also give some gratitude for this program as well with three teenagers, and now they have jobs, and they get around the city on their bikes and on the bus. So, grateful as a parent.
I think that does it. Thanks, Scott. All right, doesn't look like there's any further comments. Student Representative Lee, advisory vote.
Aye.
All right, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All right, thank you. That passes unanimously. Going to the next separation, 10.23. Okay, hold on, let me read the motion. This was the donation that we acknowledged at the beginning of the meeting tonight. "I move that the Board of Education accept a donation in the amount of $17,009.27 from UW Credit Union in memory of Terry Paps for a sensory room at the Row Elementary School."
I pulled, second, Nikki Vandermeulen.
Okay.
I pulled this because I know we thanked them the first time, but I believe this could not be a more fitting tribute to a lost teacher than to continue her work. This sensory room will make a huge difference, and it's something that needs to be focused on. And the thank you is heartfelt on that. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Board Member Vandermeulen. All right. Student Representative Lee, your advisor.
Aye.
All right, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All right, passes unanimously. All right, we are now going to keep moving through our agenda. We are into other reports to the board. City County Schools Collaborative Committee, there is nothing to report because we did not meet in September. Student Senate.
Yeah, so we had our second meeting of the year. We opened applications for our two new committees, Student Wellness and Education Equity. In Student Wellness, we're trying to focus on student safety, mental health, and substance abuse. And in Education Equity, the students are focusing on diversity in AP and honors courses. We familiarized many students with board docs, so we had a little lesson on that. And we had our first ever middle, or first middle school student of the year. So, yeah, super exciting.
Well done.
Thank you. Next is Madison School and Community Recreation, or the MSCR three committee.
Thank you, President Nichols. Our advisory committee met on September 17th, and we'll meet again in the middle of November. Some news from MSCR. Fall activities are off to a great start with over 10,300 people registered for programs and after-school clubs and sports getting underway. Just this afternoon, over 200 Madison Middle School athletes competed in the first MSCR cross-country meet at Olin Park. And this fall, super excitingly, MSCR has expanded youth apprenticeship opportunities for MMSD high school students developing their skills, working in MSCR after-school programs, working directly with younger students. I'm super, super excited to hear that. MSCR is also excited to begin work on a new strategic plan that will guide MSCR's future work and align it with the district's emerging strategic framework. Also, don't forget, to make MSCR happen, people need to be doing that amazing work. MSCR is hiring in after-school aquatics, arts dance, fitness, inclusion services, sports, and more.
We're off to a good start. All right, next, is there an update from the Policy Committee?
Yes, our update is that at our board retreats in October, October 10th, we will be bringing forth a process for us to initiate board policy, as well as hopefully discuss a calendar to do the board work around policy.
Thank you. All right, I'm going to move us into Other Business, which is Board Policy 1550, the policy on additional compensation for board members. This is redlined and considered a first read. So... Am I reading this motion? Okay. All right, I move that the Board of Education approve Policy 1550. Additional compensation for board members in accordance with the documents prepared for the September 29th, 2025 regular meeting. The policy will be revised effective immediately.
Second.
Okay. The redlined version has some language in here that did not pass tonight. I see your hand, Board Member Muldro, so is it assumed that the the language that did not pass would automatically be struck from this? Okay. All right, Board Member Muldro.
Yeah, I think it's complicated to vote on this policy because two parts of it have actually already appeared, is my understanding, in our agenda. So we already voted on the shift in relationship to the retreat when we were talking about the board budget amendment. And then the shift related to PD was also a board budget amendment. So I'm wondering, are we voting again on the policy to reinforce the vote to compensation that's driven from our retreats?
It was solely the reason, ma'am, I should have asked that first. The reason is to change the language to show that the increased compensation on board retreats and the other language that did not pass would be strict. Am I correct?
I'm comfortable voting in favor of this, particularly in relationship to the retreat compensation because we voted to approve that earlier in our conversation about the board's stipend. I think it's an update that is, in a lot of ways, pretty overdue. It hasn't been changed since 1994. The other thing is, is I think we've gotten to discuss this update pretty thoroughly in terms of the policy implications related to this update and the budgetary implication. So we did speak to this policy in both of the work groups in which we were talking about adjusting this rate per day and half-day in relationship to retreats.
It just codifies the language. That's the only thing.
I greatly appreciate the work that went into updating this policy so that it could be in alignment with our budget amendment.
All right. There aren't, are there any?
Yeah. Do we need to?
Okay, so I request that, because the way that 1301 currently, that we have to read each policy twice before we come through. And so the way that the motion is currently, it is to go ahead and approve it in alignment with our budget amendment passage. So in that, we just also have to further move that we are bypassing a second review of Board Policy 1550 as it is required pursuant to Board Policy 1301. Therefore, the board shall vote on whether to adopt the amended policy at the September regular board meeting.
Okay, Board Member Muldro.
I'm happy to waive policy, I'm sorry, 1301. I'm happy to waive policy or I move that we waive policy 1301 in order to change Policy 1550 this evening. Second.
Do we need a vote on waiving it?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. We'll take a vote on this, although we already had a motion table, but fine. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, aye, sorry.
Aye.
Right. Any opposed? Okay. So we have unanimously approved waiving policy 1301. Now we're going to go back to Policy 1550. Board Member Muldro.
Thank you. I want to acknowledge that bypassing Policy 1301 is in part something I'm comfortable with because we've done a really thorough review of the budget implications of this very slight adjustment to the policy. The other reason is I think we've spent a lot of time on this, and I think it's a good idea to move forward in this work and not prolong it in order to meet the standards of Policy 1301. So I am voting in favor of this shift to policy in order to change the board's stipend as it relates to our retreats for. And I'm grateful that we're doing this change because I think it is tremendously past due, given that it was adjusted last time in 1994.
All right, thank you, Board Member Muldro. All right, so we have the motion to approve Policy 1550. We've already waived our second read per Policy 1301. So Student Representative Lee, your advisory vote.
Aye.
All right, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All right, that passes unanimously. All right, let me just see if we have any other business. We have no other new or old business for the meeting. All right. Board Member Vandermeulen makes a motion to.
Second.
And Castro's in for the second. All those in favor? All right, thank you. Meeting is.